Members, good afternoon to the special C session on planning and lands. We would like to welcome the secretary, Mr. Michael Wong, and also Mr. Miss Benedict Ling, Permanent Secretary for Development. We'll deal with works in the next session. I will give the floor to the Secretary for Development. For a short introduction, will members who intend to speak press the request to speak button? So, Mr. Wong, can you please complete your introduction in five minutes? Thank you. Chairman.
Thank you. The respective contrarian officers of the planning lands branch of government departments under the plan bureau will be six thousand one hundred and ten million dollars, representing increase of four hundred and forty million dollars or seven point seven percent. The additional recurrent recurrent resources are mainly deployed to the following three areas. Firstly, to increase manpower to handle the work of increasing land supply. Second, to strengthen the work of safeguarding building safety. Thirdly, to support smart city development and harbor fund enhancement. In terms of land supply, we're going to apply for funding from the council on a few major development projects, including the main works of the first phase of Kootenay North, Fanning North, NDA and the NT, the first batch of works of Hong Shui Kiu NDA, as well as the studies on Ka Yee Chau, artificial islands, and the near shore reclamation on three locations, namely Long Kootan, Siu Ho Wan and Sunny Bay. We'll also expedite the planning for brownfield development, kickstart development on the first phase of the NT North NDA development, covering San Tin, Lock Ma Chau, and formal policy measures to promote relocation of brownfield operations in multi-story buildings. Drop details of land sharing pilot scheme as soon as possible, and commission a detailed technical study on the development of the thirty-two hectares of Fanning Gulf cause for housing purpose. And with the one billion funding scheme recently launched, we are supporting NGOs actively to take forward these projects as soon as possible with a view to putting more vacant government sites to optimal short-term uses benefiting the community. We will pursue more vigorously the single-site multiple-use model through multi-story development on GIC sites to accommodate and consolidate different public facilities to provide the public services to meet local demand and to make optimum use of government department. And we'll work closely with the Innovation and Technology Bureau and other relevant departments to press ahead with the setting up of the common spatial data infrastructure to facilitate the dissemination, utilization, and innovative application of geospatial data. Full and gradual commission of the planning for the harbor front areas and the commissioning of the related major infrastructure projects on both sides of the Victoria Harbour, the Development Bureau will make best use of the six billion dollar C M A funding to take forward nine projects located in Wan Chai Eastern District, Kai Tech, Charco Ling, and Chiu Man respectively. Thank you. Eleven members have requested the request to speak button, and I read out their order. Jeremy Tam, Yu Shi Wing, Andrew Wen, Pocka Ki, Tony Zi, Frankie Yik, Leng Chi Chang, Cheng Chong Tai, Ju Hai Tik, Chen Chi Chuen, and Gary Fan. Mr. Jeremy Tam, four minutes, please. Thank you, Chairman.
My question is one eight four. It's about small houses. So you refer to the judgment of the judicial review made on the fourth or ninth of April twenty nineteen. I said, how come the target for is always dealing with two thousand three hundred applications per year, a very clear target? And I asked how you arrived at the performance pledge, and you said it is a performance pledge set by the lands department. So every year, with the exception of one, you have been dealing with two thousand or so applications. So you've been very efficient in dealing with small house applications. Now, if you are equally efficient in dealing with our PRH demand, that will be excellent. The annual cost, staff cost is fifty point eight million dollars. One oh four staff members are there to deal with, on average, two thousand three hundred cases per year. So the administrative cost per case is around twenty-two thousand dollars. Now, the ruling for the judicial review has been handed down. So in response to the latest judgment, will you readjust your target small case, small house applications processed per year? Because they are close to nine hundred and thirty-two hectares of government land for construction of small houses, and they should not be, they shouldn't continue. So shouldn't you downwardly adjust the target number of small house applications to be processed, and shouldn't you reduce the number of staff deployed to deal with such applications? If you can cut the target number of applications to about five hundred or a thousand a year, can that be done? And may I have a timeframe, please? Mr. Chen, Director of Lands, thank you.
Regarding the target number of small house applications to be processed per year, we've always set at two thousand three hundred because of manpower deployment and also the resources required to deal with such applications. In the past a few years, we have not changed the manpower deployed to deal with small house applications, and that's why the target has always been the same at around two thousand three hundred. Pause here, please. Shouldn't be the other way around? You should first determine the number of small houses to be built per year before you deploy manpower, and you have done it the other way around. What kind of planning is this? Looking back, our track record in dealing with small house applications, we have a backlog of thousands of cases. We want to maximize our resources, and we will try do our best in dealing with small house applications. As Mr. Tam said, there was recently a court judgment, and we will suspend the receipt and processing of small house applications involving private treaty grants and land exchange. And what percentage do they account for? In the past five years, the number of free building licenses involve eighty to ninety percent of the cases. So ninety to eighty percent of the two thousand and three hundred cases, over eighty percent of the cases we process involve free building licenses. Mr. Michael Wong, let me explain briefly. If we look at the judgment of the High Court, it is of the view that free building license arrangement is perfectly legitimate and legal, and we have suspended the processing of applications under the PTG and land exchange arrangements. We are now studying the judgment and the legal position with DOJ very carefully, and we've yet to come up with a decision as to whether we're going to lodge an appeal. We have until early May to make this decision. Mr. Yu Shi Wing.
My question is number one oh five on supply of land for hotels. According to the government's response, in sixteen seventeen, there was one hundred and ten thousand square meters, and then seventeen eighteen, one hundred and fourteen thousand, and for this year, only sixty thousand square meters. So we have seen a downward trend in the supply of land for hotel. When it comes to demand, starting from last year, occupancy rates of hotel rooms were over ninety percent on average. So there's a great demand for hotel rooms. When the vacancy rate is low, then prices will go up, and it will be a deterrent for visitors to visit Hong Kong. In past few years, we have not seen a very marked increase in the number of visitors to Hong Kong. There will be the guesthouse bill to be passed, and if it is enacted, then about two hundred guests will not have their licenses renewed, and also guesthouses. And some illegal guesthouses would also stop their operation. So the figures here are very worrying. Given that there are so few hotel sites for disposal, will the government increase supply of hotel sites so as to balance the demand and supply? And the second question is reply number one oh five, related issue. The CE in her Q and A session said to my question about increasing supply of hotel use, that revitalization of industrial buildings can be used as a measure to relieve the measure. Sorry, the reply number should be one eight nine, one nine eight. She talked about revitalization of industrial buildings. Yes, we have seen more industrial buildings being revitalized. Would there be any policy improvement to encourage this? So that when we don't have enough hotel sites, we can have another way out to address the shortage of hotel rooms in Hong Kong? Thank you. Yes, it goes to show a shortage of sites. There is a demand for hotel rooms, so is there for housing. However, Mr. Yu can rest assured. If we just look at a few years, that may not accurately reflect the situation. For commercial sites such as hotels, there can be ups and downs, or can, there can be great changes in ten years. Now, usually, recently, new hotels have come from conversion as well as redevelopment. Yes, after revitalization, industrial buildings can be used as hotels. As regards incentives for this to happen, we have already put in place some of them. However, it is the decision of the owners of industrial buildings concerned. Because of the demand from the tourism sector, we'll do our best. Secretary. Some owners have converted hotels to commercial use. Please turn on the microphone for Mr. Yu. That being the case, when there is an application for conversion, can the administration discuss with these owners? If they say, if they see that income from commercial premises is higher than that of hotel rooms, then they will have the incentive to do so. So in conversion, can you specify whether it should be for hotel or commercial use? There are both ways. For some sites, we have designated hotels, and in some of the cases, we have designated commercial, but at least a certain percentage of GFA should be used for hotel use. It depends on the conditions of the site. And with the Tourism Board or Commission from the Economic Commerce and Economic Bureau, we have discussions, and we may not be able to resolve the situation overnight. Mr. Andrew Wen.
Reply number zero nine one. I asked for effective measures to resolve the problem of selling of ding rights. And according to the reply, the lands department will follow its usual policy and deal with that seriously. I am asking how you can crack down on the trading of ding rights. So please supplement. Another question is reply number oh nine one. Yes, my first question was zero nine one, and the second one is one nine one. I apologize, I've got a few questions. Now, there is a judicial review on ding rights. I know that there is a pending appeal. I'd like to know whether the administration will consider how the land can be released if PTG and land exchange arrangements are not allowed.
In fact, some village-type land can also be released. I have found this example, Secretary. You said that such land is always scattered, but then there is this two-point-two hectare piece of land in Tin Shui Wai next to Hame Village, and opposite it is Tin Shi Village. And we are talking about these sites with potential. We know the case is going on, but I'm asking you whether you will be doing some research work now. I will answer the second question first, and the first one will be answered by the Director of Lands. We haven't decided whether to lodge an appeal. If you look at the judgment released, well, the judge is of the view that there may be an appeal, but we have twenty-eight days, and it will be up to the sixth of May before the different parties have to decide. In fact, the applicant, the government, and Hang Yi Cook, they can all lodge appeals. Government land, which is now zoned village-type development, depends very much on whether there will be an appeal. You mentioned the site in Hang May, that is a special site. It is not government land, but it was resumed. We have this village expansion area policy, and so this is in a special category. Let us not assume that there will be an appeal. Generally speaking, we do review government sites from time to time, so I do not exclude the possibility of a review. But if the legal position is so unclear, we don't think it is any good use of planning resources if we start a review now. You know our work very well, Mr. Wen. The Planning Department is heavily burdened, and they have to do detailed design for some NDAs, and there are other NDAs which have to be developed. We are working on seventy rezoning requests as well. So we may not do it as soon as possible, but we do not rule out any possibility. Mr. Chen, about the selling and buying of ding rights. First, we'd like to clarify that normally speaking, when we talk about such transfer of ding rights, it is like this. When applicants apply for building a small house, he must be the only registered legal owner of the site. If anyone does not comply with that condition and cheat the lands department so that it issues a license, then it will amount to an offense. But you are not answering my question. If we receive any information or complaint suspecting the buying and selling of ding rights, we have an investigation mechanism within the department, that is for initial investigation. If we are reasonably suspicious of such an act, well, because this is a criminal act, we will refer it to a LEA. As you said, Mr. Wen, in the reply, we have got a hundred and three such cases in the last three years, which were subject to our initial inquiry, and we found that there was sufficient reason for them to be referred to the law enforcement agencies. Please allow Mr. Wen to finish his follow-up. And what about the manpower level? He says that there is a team within the department. How many people are there, Mr. Chen? Can you answer that direct question? At the last question, we have a team tackling applications for small house building, and the same team will deal with this particular ding right issue. And also, the same team tackles redevelopment in the rural area. So we do not have one particular team of people dealing with the transfer of ding rights, but we will follow up on any complaints. Dr. K K Kwok. One one eight, one one nine, also on land. Secretary, as you know, Hong Kong people are facing very difficult situations. Every time we ask Mr. Frank Chan the question, he will ask us to ask you. And you are going to be able to provide fourteen thousand five hundred units by land sale, and there will be fifteen thousand other units. And people are waiting so long for housing, but Kai Tech has land which has not been sold for a long time. You are the one who is jacking up land premium prices. Now, can you undertake here to increase land sales? So that those who are paying six million dollars to buy a nano flat because they are ineligible for H O S and they cannot queue up for PRH, can you give them some help?
Thank you.
Well, it is not a yes or no answer. Every year... No, the thing is, the land is there. It is basking in the sun. We all know that in Kai Tech, the land has been there for twenty-two years. Dr. Kwok, can you allow Mr. Wong to explain?
First, how do we set the private housing target? Well, it is decided by the long-term housing strategy. As you know, the LTHS has been adjusted. The ratio would be seven to three, that is, public-private housing ratio. And therefore, the target for the private part would be thirteen thousand five hundred. It is because of a change in the ratio. And then, we can take Kai Tech as an example. When you see land, it doesn't mean that it can immediately be sold. It has to be provided with basic infrastructure, and it has to be connected to roads. If we can get a site to be spade-ready, we would, of course, put it on the market as soon as possible. The general public may not understand it because there may not be infrastructure. So are you telling the public that you have continued, to have to continue to pay six million to eight million for a nano flat? Because you actually have no answer. You, your answer is like peeling an onion. Well, it's okay. Let us look at these two pictures. Maybe you remember them. One is Lampin Wai, the other one is Tong Tao. It was discovered in twenty oh four, and fifteen years have passed. This is a village house, but it is five-story high. In twenty eleven, when Carrie Lam was the, your predecessor, she claimed that this would be phased out, and then there was the automatic registration system, but it came to nothing. These pictures were taken last month. The entire building stands there intact. This is such a poor and inefficient government. You said that you would enforce the law, but you did not do anything. You say in phase one, you will tackle some, and phase two, you will tackle others. But it was from twenty twelve, and now you are still in stage one. Is it that these two are really meagre cases, so you are not going to deal with them? Mr. Wong. If there is unauthorized building in these villages, of course, we are going to deal with it. Director, Mr. Zheng. We start from the principle of safety for the public and legal enforcement. We would patrol all the village houses in each village. Well, this was from fifteen years ago. When will you patrol this village? We village, we patrol the villages according to the order. What about these two villages? They were shown in the media for over ten years. Mr. Zheng. We are doing it in an orderly fashion, and we have not come to these villages. They are still in the queue.
Sorry, Dr. Kwok. You have asked the question many times, but I'm afraid you will get the same answer. Next, Mr. Tongi Chair, four minutes.
Thank you, Chair. Let you refer to zero zero four and zero six nine. As you can see, we face the problem of aging population, and in fact, there is also a difficult problem of aging buildings. In Hong Kong, there are over eight thousand buildings which are over fifty years old, and the number is increasing by the hundreds every year. If you only rely on the U R A, I don't think it will be very effective, and you cannot resolve the problem. Secretary, have you thought of other ways and means so you can tackle urban aging? Many of our buildings are really decades old.
Reply two two oh. Single-site multiple use. Yes, that should be the case because we have a serious shortage of land. But as to how we should use it, you, of course, will have to consider different issues, and also there are views from the professions and the community. But in fact, I asked you this question before. Government departments may own property and land, and you just act like a dog in a manager. Like markets, in the past three years, three markets were closed, and you are going to close another two. However, you don't think about future uses. You would close them first, and then you would consult and study the issue, and you give people the impression that you claim there is a shortage of land while you own property and you allow them to lie idle. I have asked you the same question. Some schools have been re-provisioned, and then you have to think about the use of the vacated school building. You shouldn't wait and see what the building should be used for only after re-provisioning. This may not be exactly your responsibility, Secretary, but you are responsible for planning land use. How can you do something to make departments act faster? Because people are very much inadequately housed at the same time. Mr. Wong.
About single-site multiple use or most uses. We have already identified some special or specific projects for trying this out, but we have some challenges. One, we may have to change our management culture. Well, it's easy if one department uses an entire building, but with this initiative, different departments may have to share the use of one building, and we may not just be talking about government departments. If there is a need for a community facility, we hope we can house it in the same building. This is new. If you have been to YSC, we are trying to get more money for the GPA Government Property Agency. And secondly, if the department decides and confirms that a certain property can be surrendered, it will be for the Planning Department to look into it. There were over a hundred vacant school buildings which have been confirmed not to be used for education anymore, and so we would look into the possibility of using them for housing and other government purposes. Yes, Mr. Chair. Can we ask the Secretary to comment on urban aging? Sorry, I don't have such good memory to remember all the questions. Well, actually, in fact, this is the main issue. If we act according to the present mode of operation and speed, it won't do. We have to expedite it. In Yaowang, the U R A is doing a study, and it is expected by early next year, the report can be submitted to government, and it is not only looking at Yamate and Mong Kok. It may come up with a strategy for expediting urban renewal, and we hope we will have that strategy, and we will be able to apply it to other areas in Hong Kong. But we have to wait for the U R A's study. We'll have to wait whether specific concepts will be proposed. I know the U R A is thinking of different renewal methods because we cannot go by our old ways anymore. Mr. Frankie Yik. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, anything else?
There is an urban renewal unit in the Development Bureau with nine staff members. Now, if you just rely on your AI, I think you may as well think of ways and policies to tackle this problem. That's very clear. Mr. Wong. Mister Wong, will you briefly respond? Sure. The U R A is our major partner. However, it is not responsible for policy formulation. Uh, the urban renewal strategy is, in fact, the government's policy. So uh it is ultimately the government's responsibility, responsibility to make policies. Uh Mister Frankie Yik. Number one O four. While the government is carrying out some studies on the use of brownfield sites. And in your reply, you said that um after you have considered the recommendations or findings of the study, you will then announce the government's policies. Now, my question is, after you have got recommendations from the study, and please discuss with the stakeholders in the industry first before you formulate your final policy. The reason why I say so is because in the S T H consultancy study, I asked them not to reserve parking spaces for taxis because they operate around the clock. In fact, there are times at night shifts when taxis have to be parked when they are not on the road. So after you have received your report from the consultant, can you communicate with the industry first before you finalize your policy? Because we all want the room to survive. Mister Wong, let me consider this first. We want to be thorough. Because if we release some policies before they are mature, there may be side effects. But of course, you may say that we should discuss mature policies more. So we will see whether we can uh respond to Mister Yik's request better. We'll consider that. Yes, I just want your consultants to um catch up with times, right, on resumption of brownfield sites. Uh, you said that the operations may be moved to multi-story buildings for continued operation. My concern is whether there will be a seamless interface in between resumption and re-provisioning. I'm afraid that there might be a gap of a couple of years. By then, uh the um operators uh have already ceased business. They want to continue to operate. Thank you. We may not be able to achieve seamless re-provisioning. Because Mister Yik's question involves two points. First, uh in terms of um uh quantity, we won't be able to provide the same amount of land. We have only about sixty hectares uh for the one hundred ninety-five brownfield sites we are going to resume. Regarding brownfield sites and uh compensation to the operators, it is very much cash-based. We, if they have difficulties, will try to assist. But I think Mister Yik can also reassure. For Kootong North N D A, the amount of brownfield sites to be resumed is not that much. So we will start with Kootong North and Fanning North. I hope that uh towards uh the later stage of the development, we'll be able to catch up, but we may not be able to achieve a seamless interface. Understood, but all everyone, including government officials, would want sustainable development in our economy. So if you create a gap, then you are going to disrupt our logistics industry. So before you formulate policies, you must consider the long-term impact on our economy. The third question, on revitalization of industrial buildings. Now, if you revitalize industrial buildings, there will be less uh go-downs or warehouses and less space for um brownfield operations. So are you going to reserve certain amount of industrial buildings in all districts? Even when you revitalize them to ensure that we have sufficient uh space for uh warehouses and go-downs? Now, in the first phase, we approved a hundred-odd out of two hundred-odd applications, and phase two has yet to be started. So the response is not really overwhelming. Will the revitalization scheme cause our industrial buildings to disappear? I don't think that would be the case. Uh, because some owners of industrial buildings uh may help to revitalize the area. Now, um unless the scheme is really that popular, but we don't see this happening now. Mister Long Chi Chang, four minutes, two questions. First is uh number one eight three. I know the C E has said in budget that there will be the single-use, a single-site multiple-use initiative. I'd like to ask whether the lands department has done any advanced studies? Apart from the two sites mentioned in the budget speech, are there other sites planned for single-site multiple use? Because I think this policy is very cost-effective, and it should be more widely implemented. My second question is, I have received many complaints from villagers that uh their squatter structures will be demolished and their permits will be revoked. Perhaps different district land offices have different approaches. Some give very short notice, some give ample notice. Still, um in the end, uh the um structures will be demolished. Because uh after the attack of Mangat, some of the structures were blown down or damaged. And after repaired, they are considered new structures, and they're required to be pulled down. So can there be some leniency in the implementation of the policy? For instance, can there be a longer warning or notice period to give them more time to explain? Usually villagers are ignorant about your policy. Even district councillors are not too familiar with your policies. So it would be rather harsh to ask them to move at short notice. Yes, there have been uh some progress after the policy address and the budget. Twenty-two billion dollars have been reserved for six projects. In fact, there are more than six. I've been to different districts, and I've got this message. Uh, for instance, even a district, there is an old market that has been used for a long time. And uh we uh welcome uh bottom-up suggestion from district councils as to how we can use it. Will you discuss very closely with the district council as to how you are going to deal with it? Yes, take Chuen Wan as example. Uh, this is among one of the six projects announced. The X Chuen Wan Magistrate See and also the Town Hall. Well, it has an area of over ten thousand square meters. I understand that the Chuen Wan District Council has set up a task force to follow up on the project, and we are more than happy to uh keep maintaining our dialogue with it. The second question, I will defer to the Director of Lands. Mister Chen, yes. It's true that after the twenty-second of June twenty sixteen, we have enhanced enforcement action against squatter structures. So any alterations, additions, or extensions after the date will be subject to a very strict enforcement action in view of uh public concern over the problem. But uh for uh victims of natural disasters such as typhoons and uh squatters, if they need repair of the damage, we will exercise discretion. So after the Mangat attack last year, for certain squatter structures in Shatouk, we gave permission uh for the structures to be redeveloped very quickly. So if there are individual cases, we'll welcome referral from district councillors and uh other persons. Thank you. Doctor Zhang Chong Tai, four minutes. First, we have to admit that uh there have been a lot of criticisms uh towards the work of the U R A in recent years. Um, my questions are O O four and O O five. U R A is a monster. It uh adopts public-private partnership. But if you have taken note of how U R A has turned, redeveloped old sites into uh uh flats of astronomical prices. One example is the one in Wanchai. Uh, the Wanchai project, it now costs eight point eight billion dollar. It has made profit of eight point eight billion dollars. Now, the Yaowang District Study uh is ongoing. It uh, the finding will be available next year. And you're referring, you may um apply the result to Chuen Wan. So my question for the Secretary is, have you noticed that for the redevelopment projects of U R A, they end up building very, very expensive flats? And they tend to be very small-sized flats. So uh in uh your small-area mode of development, will you ensure that this will not happen again? So that redevelopment projects will not become just a property development project. A recently quite controversial case is Fang Yun Street in Mong Kok. I think is against the so-called trademark or trade description ordinance. Uh, we were told that there would be a sky-open space or sky garden there to change uh the look of Mong Kok. However, it was against the O Z P. So you may paint a very rosy picture in order to convince the public. But then we're told that it cannot provide a roof, a garden, uh because it's against the law. So we end up having a one thousand square feet um penthouse. So very often, uh they do not, the outcome doesn't tally with the original promise. And upon completion, these projects are uh the Driplelet. For instance, Sky Park in Mong Kok do not allow, doesn't allow people to eat there, to sleep there, to play there. So it is not really an open pu- public open space. So uh can you uh fine-tune the approach? Thank you. I think this is a big issue, and I will answer very succinctly. I beg to differ from Mister Zheng's view on the U R A. U R A builds flats for the private market. So flats will be sold at market prices. If prices are high in the market, then the flats will be expensive. And in fact, uh the um new arrangements have already started. There is no need to wait until the Yaowang District Study is completed. It will not just look at one single site. It will look at the connectivity for the whole district. Now, for Sappu Street, it's been chosen because uh it is a pedestrian subway leading to the Kai Tech development area. So uh the area will be tidied up for the enjoyment of the local residents. Mister D J, four minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on a reply number O O six. The government said that the judicial review has the judgment that uh free building license arrangements under the policy is a lawful traditional right and interest of indigenous villagers of the N T under the Basic Law. All right, if you say that this is a legitimate or lawful traditional right, shouldn't there be conditions to be satisfied? Now for small house application. First, these villages may not necessarily uh build the small houses in their own village. It can be done in an other home in the village.
Secondly, once it's built, it can be sold. Chairman, if you look at the judgment, Para one one three, it states specifically, and I quote.
Villages for free building licenses were in practice, restricted by the district officer to male villagers applying to build village houses for their own use or the use of their families within their own village area.
It seems the judgment is describing the ding right system. And also, when it talks about the free building license arrangement, it states clearly that there are conditions. First of all, you must own the land. And two, it must be within your own village. It must not be in another village. And number three, you must build it for the use of yourself or your family. My question is, you seem to assume that the judgment means you can continue with your present mode of operation in order to issue free building licenses. Is that an accurate reading of the judgment? Mister Wong. I have to be very careful, Mister Chu, because this is a legal issue. The judgment is clear, however, in one thing. Eligible indigenous villagers can apply to build a small house once in his lifetime in his own land. And in doing so, he will receive a free building license. This is provided for under Article forty of the Basic Law because it is a lawful traditional right. I think that is the main point of the judgment. Well, if there are other points in the judgment, I don't think I should easily comment on them. But Mister Chu, coming back to the small house policy, we asked whether there should be any restrictions. But in fact, there are restrictions. It is not that we automatically approve any applications. We vet them. But we only apply restrictions under the present system. As for buying and selling, the policy is for the house to be inhabited by that villager. However, under the present policy, they can sell the small house. If they do so within five years. Well, I think Mister Chu, you knows this. Um, it is according to the way it was built, like free building license or by P T G, and they may have to pay up the premium, and we are going to continue with that policy. Thank you. My question is, it's clear that the judgment says generally that the free building license is in line with Article forty. But there can be controversies as to the details. Should it be as what the government is doing? Or should there be the application of restrictions before this can be considered as being lawful and traditional? Maybe you should also consider this. Mister Wong. Mister Chu. I think um the judgment has said that these points will not be dealt with in the present ruling. And as to whether these will be dealt with in future cases is something we don't know. But for the government, we are going to continue with our existing small house policy in that we are going to issue free building licenses. Mister Ray Chan, four minutes.
First, I'd like to talk about enhancing squatter control. The lands director said that you announced regulatory controls in June twenty sixteen, and any extension alteration will not be allowed. Now, of course, if they turn the structure into a luxurious flat, then of course you have to deal with them because they will be exposed by the media. But I'd like to ask you whether you have mounted any large-scale action to eliminate squatter structures? Or do you have a plan to do so? We have received many such cases. Actually, you said that if they do not obstruct anyone, and if they are on land, that has not been specified for any use, you may tolerate them. But then you also told us that because of the super typhoon and people had to rebuild their structures. Now, if the house had been used by or with asbestos, they cannot do so now, and they may choose other materials, and then the resultant house may be a lot more luxurious. And it happens if, actually...
And it happens if actually the officials also are deployed elsewhere after they have inspected the initial plans. And now I'd like to talk about my own question, which is number two hundred. I asked you about the cross-sector development section in the planning department. I'd like to ask you what the team is doing. In the next financial year, you are going to spend twenty-one million on thirty-one officials. I'd like to ask whether that represent a, represents an addition or decrease compared to previous years. We have the Hong Kong Zhuhai Macau Bridge, Lian Tang Cross-Boundary Point, and also the X R L. Now, you are also studying into superstructure development at the um Hong Kong Zhuhai Macau Bridge portal. But we haven't really seen other cross-boundary infrastructure projects in the pipeline. If there are none, do you really need this kind of manpower? Director of Lands? Mister Chen? On squatter control, we'd like to emphasize that they may be registered, but it is only tolerated temporarily. We have enhanced control in twenty sixteen, and we are going to target new construction alteration or extension. We are going to apply regulatory control. But as for cases that have existed, we will add according to our existing mechanism in that we are going to patrol the areas and also will react to complaints. But if we see these unlawful cases, we will accord priority to the more serious cases. Say, for example, they turn a structure into subdivided units when in the first place the structure should not be inhabited, then there will be a safety hazard and we are going to do control more quickly. And as for illegal building works that have existed, we will add according to the established mechanism. And our squatter control team will regularize the situation. And that is, if in a suitable period of time, they will add according to the original plan and reinstate the structure, we will allow it to be done. Of course, some materials cannot be found anymore. We will accept uh similar materials that can be used. Mister Lee, planning for the cross-boundary infrastructure and development section. We have not exactly added manpower to this section. Now it is doing regular work. Every two years, we will do a survey of travelers and traffic on a cross-boundary basis. It will let us know whether we should go for more cross-boundary structure, and if yes, where. And together with mainland planning authorities, we will be exchanging data with them. Sorry, there is no mic for the member. Mister Lee? Uh no, because the main task for this section is that they are now working on data with regard to cross-boundary traffic and traveling. Mister Gary Fan? First, zero two two. The Development Bureau has an additional twenty-two posts. There are five assistant clerical officers who will give support for the use of idle land. In twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen, you have only approved thirteen S T Ts. That is a one every two months. And now you have ten more who will be giving support for the use of idle land. I'd like to know how these ten posts will help you expedite the approval of cases for N G Os to use vacant land. And then one five eight. You have told us that in the last three years, N G Os using S T Ts uh were in the region of thirteen. I'd like to ask about two such pieces of land, and they have been used as village offices. I'd like to talk about items twelve and thirteen, and that is one school in Saikong and one in Pet Ham. You are talking about vacant school premises. I'd like to know the rent charged and also the area of such schools. Can I defer to Miss Ling?
First question. The member asked about increased manpower for approving the use of idle sites. You members have given us one billion dollars provision earlier on, and this team is working in a more aggressive mode. Very often, they proactively contact N G Os and tell them at an early stage how applications can be made. So this year, we want to see some results. Some members or the member asked about these S T Ts. Indeed, village offices do apply to use such premises in order to take care of the needs of that particular area. Usually, the H A D supports such uses um using a concessionary or nominal rent. Can you give me the specific information? Even if you cannot give me specific information now, can you give a written reply afterwards? Okay, and the other part, Mister Chan?
One five eight. Well, we will let you know the concrete um rent later on. Mister Fan, um no more follow-up.
Mister Michael Tin, thank you. I'd like to talk about the reservation of sites for small house applications. This is a table with different colors. In the last few years, twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, applications approved. As you know, the green ones have to do with private land. You approve a few hundreds every year. The judge said that this is protected by the Basic Law. And yellow and red, they are government sites. They have been um leased under P T G and land exchange. And the judge is saying that this is not protected under the Basic Law. And now, I think the villagers will appeal, but we don't know yet. My question is simple. You have put aside nine hundred hectares under the yellow and red spots. And in the past, you have been approving just like over a hundred applications every year. And yet you are putting aside nine hundred hectares. No matter what the ultimate outcome of this court case is, I find it really mind-boggling as to why you want to put aside nine hundred hectares for just a hundred up applications every year. And if, in the end, the C F A will say that the Basic Law will also cover such types of land, then uh as a member was asking, how many small houses can be built on these nine hundred hectares of land? You said you have to wait for the final outcome of the appeal. But I just don't understand, why do you need that kind of land space? You should start now to study how much land can be released. And you can of course keep the remaining ones for the appeal outcome, and I think you can tide over a few decades. I'd like to ask you whether I have misunderstood anything. Thank you, thank you for the chance for me to explain. I can't say you have misunderstood anything, but um I think the planning concept is a little technical. It is not that we have put aside nine hundred hectares of land for small house building. It is like this, the nine hundred hectares have been zoned village-type development, and they are government land. And within village-type development, we can have agricultural development. If you look at the legend, there is column one, and then there is column two in town planning. And even roads. And G I C facilities can be included in these nine hundred hectares. We say we cannot say how many small houses can be built on these nine hundred hectares of land because if someone says that he would like to use P T G to build a small house in the V zone, which is on government land, then when he comes in with the application, we'll look at many things.
For instance, uh site constraints, environmental factors, even though it is uh within the V zone, if it is next to an environmentally sensitive uh river course, then it's likely that the application will not be approved. And uh even though uh it is not an access road, but uh is for um for passing by, then, no, no. All right, nine hectares of land, nine hundred hectares of no land is not for the yellow and red categories. If according to the quarter, they are not protected under the Basic Law, then uh these are nine hundred hectares will not be released. All right, I'll answer this question directly. For this nine hundred hectares of land, uh according to the Task Force on Land Supply, well, even if it is government land, it is in between two small houses. The potential for development of high-density residential development in particular is limited. According to a civic uh organization's research, there should be a three hundred hectares of land available for high-density development. So you can see that the nine hundred hectares may not all be suitable for high-density development. So we do from time to time review uh the uses of all government land. Mister Tin, just uh one sentence by way of supplement. Well, the legal proceedings are going to take time, and after that, I don't know how many years you have to study the issue. I just want you to start earlier on how uh the space can be used. I want you to do that in parallel because we cannot control uh the time taken for a court to make a decision. All right, among the nine hundred hectares of land, uh not much is suitable for high-density development. Can we do a study within a relative short period of time? We have to reconsider that. And it's also about maximizing uh land, uh our resources. The planning department has a heavy workload. We will have to see whether there is an appeal, and it takes a few weeks to tell. Mister Laqo Fan, four minutes.
Thank you. Reply number oh six eight. My main concern is your land is limited, and we should uh maximize land resources for single-site multiple use. Perhaps we can consider using uh underground space more or. And it said that uh the pilot study on use of underground space should be completed soon. But now the completion time is uh deferred to twenty twenty next year. I'd like to know uh the scope of the study. Would that cover geotechnical conditions, financial feasibility, and uh titles and ownership arrangement? Because you only talked about the technical and uh physical fiscal feasibility. We're using underground space in many cities, and in Hong Kong, it's not that common yet. I hope the study can be completed as soon as possible so that we can make good use of underground space. Another option is to uh enhance building heights. For many old buildings, they are subject to plot ratio and building height restrictions. In the past, in the N T, we have rural areas. So uh the building intensity is not that high. We have many low rises. Can you consider further relaxing plot ratio in the N T?
Secretary, thank you. I will take the second question first. We have relaxed the plot ratio twice. Uh one in twenty fourteen, and the recent one is in twenty eighteen, targeting public housing in particular. However, there is a limit to uh the extent of relaxation. In Hong Kong, we want to have proper planning. We have to stop when development intensity reaches a certain stage because in certain uh sites, there are traffic constraints and also environmental constraints. So uh we cannot relax the plot ratio indefinitely. We cannot do it too many times. We also maximize potential of underground space. Underground space may not come cheap in development, and it may also not be suitable for um residential purpose. So we will conclude the study first, and then we will give an account of the findings to the community in due course. Any follow-up? Yes. Uh you said that uh traffic constraints may limit uh the plot ratio. However, the plot ratio is the same for the whole E Z P. You now for uh public housing in twenty eighteen, you relaxed the plot ratio restriction. And then if the application comes from a private developer, you may not necessarily accede. So I'd like to know when building height and plot ratio can be relaxed. Well, it's possible that individual cases from the private sector can be acceded to. In twenty fourteen, in certain districts of Hong Kong, we relaxed the plot ratio or particular area by twenty percent. Instead of five, uh plot ratio was allowed to reach six. But that is not a blanket approval. Individual cases have to come forward for an application and subject to various assessments covering traffic environments and air ventilation. And um approval will only be given if all these conditions are satisfied. Miss Alasmaak, I have a lot of questions. First, number oh four five. Uh my question asked whether you our strategy will be improved. This is related to members' question that U R A is building expensive flats. Let me declare, I am a non-executive director of the U R A. The U R A resumes land in older areas, and by open tendering, private developers are allowed to bid for the sites. And of course, in a tendering exercise, um because we'll talk about land, we will uh give, grant the site to the highest bid. And when flats are completed, of course, it will be expensive. It is certainly not the U R A's objective to build flats that are expensive and small in size. Now, after it is private developers that are selling the flats. And U R A is considering other development approaches. For instance, a first-time uh flats for home starters and also uh Hong Kong, a property for Hong Kong people. If we can adjust the urban renewal strategy so that sites will not be granted to a private developer based on the uh bidding price, then if we allow the U R A to develop the sites instead, perhaps this may be useful in dispelling the misunderstanding that U R A likes to build small but expensive flats. So will the administration consider reviewing the U R S so that U R A can play a bigger role in providing public housing? Another question is number zero four six. Uh zero six four. Single-site, multiple-use. The government plans to redevelop the liking convalescent building of pre- complex of Princess Margaret Hospital. Now, if we want single-site multiple-use to work, we should relax the plot ratio because uh we do not have enough sites. Now, because of the plot ratio restriction, upon redevelopment, we can only have a six-story building. It is a waste of resources. It is a waste of resources. So apart from the sites proposed here, can the administration relax the plot ratio restriction? Because of the plot ratio constraints, only a six-story building can be built in the in Liking. Now, we have high expectations for the committee. And what will be the timetable for the committee? The role of the U R A. U R A resumes sites in old buildings. And so um uh the by tendering, by open tendering, private developers are given the right to develop these sites. Now, uh U R A is trying out new possibilities in home status scheme, for instance. And it was of a new role to play involving civil service cooperative building society scheme sites. So we will see from the Yaomong District Study whether we can have some adjustment in the role of U R A. It's not that we've already got a timetable for reviewing the whole U R S because the time is not ripe yet. But we look forward to the outcome from the Yaomong District Study. I believe we will have a major improvement in the mode of operation of U R A as a result. The second question, plot ratio. I don't want to uh comment on this arbitrarily. Now, if a redevelopment project is also already started, if all of a sudden there is a change in government policy and if the whole project is called to a halt, that may be, that may waste a lot of time. And as for the committee, it's just been set up at this stage. I mean, the committee will convene its first meeting very soon and we are happy to explain to the council the progress of our work. Mister Shu Ka Jun, thank you. Uh number one oh six, the use of vacant sites. According to the administration, uh vacant sites will be leased to NGOs as at end of the year. Two sites have been let and they have to be renewed on um quarterly basis. Only two sites have been leased. I don't know whether you consider that satisfactory or not. I'm not because according to many NGOs, I've met with the Development Bureau and many NGOs have told me that they have decided not to take up these sites because of the short-term tenancy arrangements. Now, they can only lease a site for up to three years. But you know NGOs do not have a lot of resources. After a lot of work, if they have to start anew after three years, this is too worrying. So they hope that the planning department can uh change the zoning of their land so that it can be more pragmatic. Although vacant government sites can be used for welfare purposes because the tenancy period is too short and so the scheme has not been too popular. So would the government consider when leasing these sites to NGOs? After a lease is granted, the zoning of the site can be amended to ensure long-term use by NGOs. Some NGOs have told me that uh the um short-term tenancy arrangement is one point and second, because these sites may not have universal accessibility. Now, in these two sites, one has been approved to uh the Direction Association for the Handicapped, for wheelchair maintenance and seminar value. I'd like to know whether the site is uh barrier-free. Otherwise, will the government provide resources to ensure universal accessibility? Will that be covered by the one billion dollar earmarked for the purpose? If not, will the government provide more resources to assist NGOs to ensure that there are universal accessibility facilities and the place is a public transport accessible?
So C. Miss Ning. Well, we are talking about two things. One, letting out STTs for community purposes. Two, whether there will be any cash subsidy. With regard to the approval of leases, it has been not satisfactory. We have done so only on a few occasions every year because very often there is delay and sometimes applicants do not have enough funding. That is why with the one billion dollars subsidy, we hope we can change the situation. And we have explained earlier that the planning of development, development, a Development Bureau will be able to do something from the top in order to reduce a certain workflow. And as for short-term tenancies, well theoretically, it can be up to seven years. But it depends on whether the land has been subject to specific zoning. Say if three years later, housing has to be developed there, then there is nothing we can do. But sometimes the land is just zoned G I C. Therefore theoretically, if the bureau supports a longer tenancy, this can be done. But sometimes policy bureaus may have other considerations. Say some NGOs may not, may not have a lot of experience and the bureau may want to check out how they operate. Therefore, even STTs are short, they can be renewed and we will try to give longer tenancies if possible. Four minutes, Mister Vincent Zhang. First of all, question forty-five and then one three four. I think Miss Alice Mac mentioned pa- uh question forty-five. That is about U R A and Yaomong Study. In Kowloon West, the progress of urban renewal has slowed down. Uh it is because the acquisition cost is high and they want to subsume things under the Yaomong Study. I can't see how the Yaomong Study will give you other opportunities if you don't change the plot ratio. The acquisition cost would still be high. However, the community has a lot of needs. They would like to, for example, have more parking spaces through urban renewal. Well, the secretary has said he will wait for the outcome of the study. And then I'd like to follow up on another question. You know, a few weeks ago, there was the falling of a window in Shemsui Pole. It was fortunate that the road user was only lightly hurt. But then the falling of an aluminium window killed a tourist last year. In Shemsui Pole, I'm following up on the mandatory window and buildings inspection schemes. In Shemsui Pole, there is a delay with regard to a few thousand cases. We asked the Buildings Department, but then they say they do not have enough manpower. Secretary, can you see whether you can streamline procedures so we can quicken the pace? Some cases have been with us for five, six years. Um maybe the Buildings Department Director, Mister Zheng Chairman. With regard to the mandatory window inspection scheme, we have issued a batch of notices. We have seen that there has been delay with certain cases. So starting from twenty fifteen, we have focused on assisting owners to comply with the notices. And the latest situation is such that there has been a lot of improvement. Eighty-eight percent of the notices have been complied with. We'll continue to assist owners to comply with these notices. Mister Chang. But still, it is not satisfactory. I know many owners are concerned about the cost of window inspection and whether they have to replace all the window frames because sometimes it really costs about twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Can you do more to help? Well, yes, we will always enhance our assistance to owners. In the market, we have been able to identify information on cost and this has been uploaded to our website and owners will know how much a window frame will cost. And also if how much a hinge or a handle will cost. We also have issued an app to facilitate the search for information, including a list of authorized persons and whether a notice has been complied with. Can you also add to your information about um the number of cases? Well, the Yaomong Study is being undertaken by U R A and we still haven't got the conclusion. But we have a lot of expectation of that Yaomong Study. We hope that it may help to overhaul certain areas of the mode of operation of the U R A, but we have to wait till early next year. Andrew Wen, second round, four minutes. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on the answer given to my last round. I think this is similar to Mister Zhang's question. It is not easy that we have a consensus. I think this because this is an important issue. Very often, the administration will say we will study into controversial issues first. But then it's strange that you have nine hundred hectares of land and still you cannot put your finger on the actual uses for the land and also when the case is concluded, what can be set up in on such land? We know we have a dire shortage of land and I think no members would object to your studying as your starting a study. Let us look at Tin Shui White. We understand that maybe not all nine hundred hectares can be used. You have quoted the figure of the Lebo Research Institute. People put the figure at thirty-two to thirty-four percent, but how come you have no figure from yourself? You say you cannot use very narrow strips of land between two village houses. But then you have show, have to show us the calculations and maybe after all the deductions, you have only one hundred hectares of land, but at least we'll know. You are correct in saying that some sites are big but some are quite broken up. Let us look at this example. If it is in the periphery of development areas, then you can actually expand the area. Like in Tin Shui White, we cannot even find space for a public market. So we expect you to do more. Can you be more specific? And can you start a pilot study so you do not have to wait for the conclusion of the court case? Secondly, I think there is a lack of coordination. There is still not a final court ruling. And the lands department just said that with regard to PTG and land exchange, you are suspending all the applications. But can you go further? If people apply to build small houses on agricultural land, can you suspend those applications as well? And will you also suspend all applications for rezoning? So you do not give rise to more controversies? Two aspects. One. In fact, we did take a look. In fact, Mister Stephen Wong, the chairman of the Task Force on Land Supply, also said this many times. They looked at V zone land. Basically, they are very scattered and it's not conducive or conducive to high-density development. I have quoted from a civic study. And as I said, I don't think I can subscribe to it a hundred percent. But then we do see eye to eye and that is over thirty percent of the nine hundred hectares. So are you telling me that this is also your figure? No, this is proposed by the Lebo Research Institute recently. Well, what about your figure? Well, for us, we will act in a more serious manner. As to whether we can have high-density development, we have to do a study first, as I said. It is not that we have unlimited planning resources. The planning department is already heavily burdened. If we do a study and then there is an appeal and then the court reaches a different decision, it would mean that our work will be totally aborted. So we have no intention to start a large-scale study. But we don't rule out looking into certain sites because we do keep them under review. Well, Mister Wen, you may not like the answer, but this is the best answer I can give you. What about the second part of my question? Earlier on, actually, on the same day the judgment was issued, in that afternoon, we issued a press release. We said that because of this ruling, before we decide to appeal or not, if there are any applications with regard to PTG or land exchange, we will not receive any if they have not been submitted and even if they have been submitted, they will be held up. Now, I was asking what about applying for a small house building on agricultural land? Will you also hold up those applications? Well, there are three ways to do it. I think you are talking about the free building license channel. The court has ruled that the present approach is constitutional and legitimate. We'll continue with it. Mister Eddie Chu, second round, four minutes. Thank you, Chair. It's the first time I have heard Mister Secretary give so much respect to the Lebo Research Institute um figures. Apart from thirty-two to thirty-four hectares out of nine hundred, actually, in twenty sixteen, they said that three hundred and one hectares which have been used as STT or which are lying idle are in the districts. I hope the bureau will look into these three hundred and one hectares so you can take up the responsibility to provide transitional housing. My question is about reply one seven five. Mister Leng Chi Chang asked about squatter control. I'd like to ask two questions. Number one, the figure is such that in twenty eighteen, you inspected two hundred thousand registered squatter huts. Even if we are conservative, hundreds of thousands of people will be in these huts. You always say we have a shortage of supply of land and housing. And on the other hand, with regard to these two hundred thousand squatter structures, if you go for strict control, you will be creating new rehousing demand. I'm not talking about the cases where a registered squatter hut will be turned into a palace. Of course, that should be controlled, but I'd like to make two points. Number one, sometimes when the LD is on site and they know that a registered squatter hut has been expanded or altered, it will give the owner some time to reinstate the structure. But the time given is so short, it is just impossible. It will be like a month and then you expect them to reinstate the alteration, which itself might have taken a few months to build. So you must give people reasonable practical time to reinstate the structure. Right now, like after Mancud, there is a lot of destruction and many would repair the structure without applying to you. It is because the LD does not have a systematic way for people to do maintenance and repair of squatter huts. And so people will go their own way and then you say they are breaking the rules and then they have to demolish the hut and then again you create new housing demand. I hope you will do something about this situation. So you do not create targets for regulatory control. Last year, there was a voluntary registration system for squatter inhabitants. And this will end on the thirty-first of December. How many people have registered? Many people are concerned that when you do your survey, you will also watch out for the use of material.
you will also watch out for the use of materials and alterations and then you would revoke the license so that these people would not be willing to register.
Short reply, please. Director of Lands. Thank you. In answering another member's question, I said that for new additions, alterations or extensions are done after June twenty sixteen, our policy is zero tolerance and they have to be demolished at once upon discovery. And for alterations, additions and uh uh extensions that existed prior to June twenty sixteen, as we said, one month is the starting point. Depending on the circumstances, if there is the need for reinstatement. If works have to be carried out, we will allow discretion. In the light of Mr. Ju's question, we will ask our squatter control units to give a clearer guidelines. Because I beg to differ from Mr. Eddie Ju's view that we have been too draconian. Because while we want to enforce the legislation, we want to ensure that we are reasonable. And as for repair and maintenance, indeed, squatter structure inhabitants need to apply for approval before maintenance or redevelopment. But after natural disaster, we do exercise discretion. So long as the um conditions of for uh registration is satisfied, then usually still accept such kind of repair works. And after Hecto and Manggood, we have given clearer guidelines to units. And we should be accommodating to victims of natural disasters as far as possible. As for the voluntary registration scheme, because the government has got an enhanced compensation arrangements for occupants of surveyed squatter structures, for surveyed structures not for residential purpose if they are now used for dwelling. If they have joined the voluntary registration scheme, we will accept the eligibility of occupants registered. Now, this is to ensure that residents will uh be entitled to compensation and rehousing in the future. And can you please give a supplementary written reply to Mr. Ju? Because three members are still waiting to ask questions. I hope members and officials can be more succinct. Dr. Fernando Zhang, four minutes. Thank you. Now for um transitional housing and also a site used by N G O's. Now, there is redevelopment of a workshop for the blind. They are trying to identify a site so that their two hundred odd employees can continue their employment. Now, the workshop is in Toka Wan. They have no choice but to go to uh Z N A home in Tuimun. Together with civic organizations who have tried to identify possible sites in Toka Wan, we have seen government sites on the Lance Department's list that can be used. And there are some other facilities and some are not on the list. For instance, there is a shipyard memorial school nearby that has been vacant for a long time, is not on the Lance Department's list. It belongs to the Education Bureau and we have checked with the E D B to see whether they have a list of vacant school premises. It's not that they don't have a list, however, that school premises are referred to, it's not on the list. This is awkward. We have over a hundred vacant school premises. However, we don't have a central database for all these vacant premises. For instance, in Pacting, Shanshui Pole, uh that is uh the headquarters of Society for the Blind, there is a vacant school premises nearby. And we noticed that it's been moved to the E D B's list three years ago. However, in the Lance Department's list, that in twenty seventeen, it could be used for short-term users. But then three years before, that is before twenty seventeen is found, that E D B was using it. And then in Artin White Village, there is another vacant school site. We can't be sure. It is on the Lance Department's list, but we're not sure whether it is available. And uh we chat, we found out that it's being used by uh Jun by Junicadet in Kun Tong, there's another Kun Tong school. So there's so intransparents, we cannot find a database that has got all the information. So shouldn't this Development Bureau make the policy more user-friendly? If you really encourage N G O's to use these vacant government sites for welfare purpose, why can't you do a little bit more so that the information can reach? N G O's that are minded to use these premises. Thank you. Ms. Ling, Chairman.
I understand that you may see many vacant school sites available in the community. And how come, what you can see on the Lance Department's list on its website is smaller in number. I think there are twenty-odd. In fact, there may be over a hundred, but uh twenty of them are on private sites. And the landowners already rezoned the sites. And of course, it won't be on the government's list. And there are some sites still held by the E D B because they feel that there are still educational uses. For instance, they may be used for decantation when a school is under develop redevelopment. So some will be on the website of the Lance Department and some on the website of Government Property Agency. Of course, we will see whether there can be better coordination. There are about twenty-odd vacant school sites. They involve applications that have been dealt with or um underpro uh pro uh being a process to avoid misunderstanding, they will be not on the list. But if we can be of any assistance, uh we can help. Mr. Shugafai and will end after Ms. Rebecca Chang has asked questions. Mr. Shugafai, thank you. I think we are in deep waters when it comes to demand for housing. The problem is going to explode soon. Uh land is expensive and so are flats. In the past few years, we've been arguing whether we should use brownfield sites or agricultural land or reclamation even. Uh there's more amount of land available from the golf course is being dragged into the discussion. I think people are wise, will know that land has to come from reclamation as a traditional means of land supply. Even if we're going to reclaim land, that doesn't mean that we will not use brownfield sites. People keep saying that it's much faster if we use brownfield sites and farm land. According to my understanding, this is not going to be much faster. Secretary, can you tell us how much time we take for reclamation and how much for using brownfield sites? Take Kao Yee Chau as an example. We hope that by twenty twenty-five, we can start the project. And by twenty twenty-eight, we have the first site available for construction. Reclamation can be done within three years. So by twenty thirty-two, we can have the first development for population intake. So if we start now, it would be thirteen to fourteen years from twenty thirty-two. Now, we're not just talking about a site. When we talk about a development of a considerable scope. Now, when we start a planning in twenty oh eight in N and of S N T, now it's twenty nineteen. We very much hope that approval can be given by the F C very soon and then population may be available. Population intake may take place in twenty twenty-three, so it's more than ten years. So timing-wise, it may not be very different, but we have to work very hard. All right, reclamation and use of brownfield sites are not mutually exclusive. We should make this message clear to the public. And many people around me, we want the government to start reclamation A S A P as regards the flats to be provided, that can be discussed later. After all, there will be resources available to the community and they do not belong to carry them. People who are wise know full well. Now, you talk about advanced works and you can only start reclamation in twenty twenty-five, at least six years from now. Is there any way you can expedite the procedures? We are in dire need of housing. Is anything legal can do to help you? When we come for funding approval, I hope you can assist. But there are procedures to be fulfilled. For instance, we need forty-two months for the advanced study that is already uh very tight and we cannot further compress the time. And we have to work on the O Z P for the time plane board. The current system is working well and I don't think we can compress time required further. Twenty twenty-five is already a very aggressive start target. Now, forty months, can you simplify the consultation process? We are talking about the welfare of Hong Kong people. Even after many years, we still have to do it anyway. And as for uh plan making, can you do things in parallel so that you can compress time as far as possible? Thank you. Ms. Rebecca Chan last speaker for this session, four minutes. Beg your pardon? Yes, I'm going to be very quick. Stop the timer, please. Uh let me uh dig up my question first. We want to reserve time for the next session. Question two-two, Kai Tech development and redevelopment of Kowloon City, my own question. Uh the reply sounds beautiful. The reply from the Bureau is they are considering an underground plaza for Kai Tech and Sa Po Road so that there can be linkage with underground pedestrian subway to enhance the connectivity of Kai Tech. Now, if this is feasible, then there can be connectivity between Kai Tech and Kowloon City. But for the Sa Po Road redevelopment plan, it was only announced a few months ago. And there is land resumption being done by some pri by the private sector. They are offering very high overs. If you do not speed up uh the uh pace, then you may not be able to do this. And we have Kai Tech and Kai Ting and Ta Long Housing Estates. Kowloon Court have just started population intake and Kawi and K City. There is already development there. And you talked about a pedestrian connectivity to Kowloon City and Kowloon Bay. In fact, Kai Tei, Kai Sing, Kai Cheng and Kai Tech has been like in Long Island for a long time. When you develop new areas, can you start the planning earlier? It's only now that you talked about resuming land for improving connectivity. It may sound good, but in fact, the residents have put up with the situation for a long time.
Secretary, thank you. I agree with the spirit behind these questions. In the P A, we have put forward the concept of transportation before occupation, so we will do a better job for occupants. The U R A Shapu Road project is a very good one. There will be the Sunken Plaza. As you know, uh at Shapu Road, it is private, it is quite old. With a U R A project, if we can provide better accessibility, it will be very good. I don't know whether you have looked at the O Z P put forward by the U R A because it's very attractive and it's going to be so good for the residents. Well, you cannot easily tell whether a project will succeed. Of course, I I tend to be optimistic. The U R A faces competition in the market, surely. But with our efforts, I'm sure many projects can go through. Well, I am sure we can make better efforts to do coordination. Well, yes, you should understand that Kai Tech Development Area residents are in a difficult situation. And I can tell the Development Bureau that you should not always go for challenging projects. Well, in fact, in Shapu Road, if you can resume the land, it will be good. But then, in Kowloon City, where I was born there, there is ninety-nine Carpenter Road. It is a clinic, it is only of one story. It has been there for a long time. You can resume the land there for redevelopment because it is a single-story building. There is not the airport anymore. And you can think of different developments there. Don't allow private developers to work on these old buildings. I think Ms. Chan's idea is very clear. I think we should conclude this session. We have to start the next one at five fifty sharp. Thank you.